Good afternoon and welcome to the Town of Acton, Maine Selectmen's Meeting for September 20th, 2016. First order is a salute to the flag.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, replevin, justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, approval of the agenda? Whoops, back up a minute here. We have General Assistance Public Hearing, so...
So each year, the General Assistance Ordinance is looked at and amended if necessary by the state and by the Board of Selectmen need to sign off on it. If you go through the packet which has been posted and available to the public, you will find that there's been a couple of changes in York County. I did highlight them in green for anybody that has a copy. They take-- the information that they gather comes from a lot of different sources to determine if these numbers need to go up or down as far as, you know, how much income one can have to qualify for General Assistance, all the way down to, you know, how much should a party-- should a family of four spend on groceries is going to be affected by the cost of living. So they have a process that, like, again, that they go through to adjust these numbers. The changes that you'll find, for York County, they did change the number-- the income per household, monthly income, on page two was changed. There was no change on the food maximums. The housing maximums in York County, on page C4, also increased the allowed amounts. And then the food maximums on page one. These are-- the last couple of pages were the same municipal use only. These are our cheat sheets, if you will, to give us a quick idea if someone's going to qualify for General Assistance, based on how many's in the household. This tells you how much they can spend and how much income they can have in. So there were no changes on either one of those, all the way down to the supplements for households with children under five. It's a whole different area. So these are the states, the recommendations that the state makes to you, and as long as we have-- as long as we govern or run by the General Assistance numbers, we need to adopt these ordinances unless there's concern. There's one page on the back that says that you're adopting MMA, Model Ordinance. It's really so that-- a real-- another key reason that it's important statewide is so that people aren't moving from town to town and getting different benefits. You know, you-- if you live-- if you have a family of three, these are your, you know, in York County, everybody qualifies for the same amount, obviously based on what kind of work might be around or the cost of living in some counties up north might be different, but they're pretty standard. I'm not sure if it's, you know, what the reason is, but our General Assistance numbers have been extremely low. I mean, I think that last year, we might have saw two people in all winter for General Assistance.
Okay. It looks pretty standard and straightforward, so go right ahead, please. Come right up. State your name for the record.
(inaudible) Williams, W.L. Williams. I just wanted to ask for my own information. When someone comes for possible government assistance, do we also contact some of the agencies that we give donations to here in this county as far as going to them for additional monies and/or specific instances that they need such and such a thing?
Yeah, I mean, I think that every situation is different. I mean, in the wintertime--
Right, I understand.
--with heating oil, for example, everybody can apply to, you know, York County Community Action. They have X amount of gallons that they give out. We always encourage people to go there first. Sometimes they-- in some cases, they-- if they don't qualify for General Assistance but there's a need, they have to have used that 100 gallons already. There are-- there are a lot of different, you know, it's whether they're-- so the short answer is yes. We use that list of resources and other resources that you-- that we-- that the Town of Acton doesn't give to. Just last week, I had General Assistance for prescriptions, and although she didn't qualify for the General Assistance, we eventually found her a program at Goodall Hospital that, because she didn't have insurance and didn't qualify for it until the enrollment period, January 1st, we found her a program right through the hospital that she could get them for--
Fantastic, yes.
--five dollars.
But I wanted to know--
We are certainly-- we use all our avenues, resources.
Okay, any other input from the town? Okay. Nothing else we need to discuss on that? I guess we just close the public hearing?
Nope, yeah, close. We need an actual motion and signed.
You have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing.
I second.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? Okay.
I'll just add that to new business if you want.
Sure, yeah, I was just going to ask, this is something we have to adopt, correct?
Yeah, we'll add it to new business under D.
Yep. Okay, now, approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
I second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? Approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? Department heads, Cemetery Committee update.
Lois was not able to be here tonight. She did give me a call and asked me to speak to you on her behalf.
Okay.
She originally came to me because she had some concerns with the cemetery cleanup that was going to happen. Do you remember, you guys all got the email?
Last Saturday.
Yes. She had some concerns about that because it was in Acton and wanted to be sure that the proper steps had been taken, and she really wanted to come to you guys tonight to find out if you'd had a chance to read the packets that she gave you that I-- that listed out the steps. And I thought that it was a good idea, prior to her doing that, for her to touch base with the Acton Shavelley Historical Society and Steve Corello, who was heading that big cleanup, to find out if he took those steps before we, you know, of course, before the car, as they say. So they were able to connect today and had a good conversation. He did get all of the property owners' written approval to-- not, excuse me, he did get all of their approval. She encouraged him to get it in writing before the cleanup, and he felt good about doing that, so she is ready to move forward with her committee. She is a committee of one, and she does need some assistance. She is waiting for a plot plan, not a plot plan, let me rephrase that. She's looking-- waiting for a grid plan, map. I reached out to Cardiographics to give her one that had what I considered basic grid marks, you know, that you could label A1, AB, or B1, so that she could start, you know, marking the cemeteries on a map. But it didn't go to the scale that she wanted, and she wasn't-- wasn't something that she could work with. So apparently, she's been meeting with Ken as well in regards to him helping with the cemetery. So the three of us are supposed to get together and kind of figure out exactly what kind of map she needs, and she would like to meet on Thursday with a possible liaison, and I'm not sure that we created a liaison for this new committee. So we need to do that, or if the board so chooses. Or possibly, we could, you know, if she kept her meetings to the first, second, or third Thursday, we could alternate it with whatever selectmen is here that Thursday, so it kind of splits it.
Yeah.
That would work.
So we know that Ed is the first Thursday, Bill is the second Thursday, and Elise is the third Thursday.
Except for October.
Yeah, don't tell me. As long as somebody shows up, that's good.
I'll be there.
So the third Thursday is-- so that's Elise this week? Is it the third--
It's the fourth Thursday.
Oh, it's the fourth?
We have five Thursdays this month.
Okay, so I'll sit down and meet with her.
I-- I mean, I can come in if you need me to.
Yeah, I don't--
I can be here.
She may want to wait until she gets this map. I don't-- I'm not sure that we're-- I'm 100% where she needs to be, but I can speak to you afterwards, whoever wants to talk about it. But she really needs a couple of members. Anybody has any interest in the cemeteries, plotting, locating? You haven't had any luck reaching the other individual?
I have not, and I've tried several times.
Shall we send a certified letter?
Well, we don't need to go quite that far. I'll drive over to the house next.
Okay. I mean, it would be a very polite certified letter, you know, we've been able to-- unable to reach you by phone and think you'd be a great person for this and want to spend some money. I mean, it would be very polite, but--
Maybe I'll try from the town hall's phone. Maybe she could call her ID, and she's avoiding me.
Oh, maybe we should have a lease call.
There we go.
I can do that.
To the cleanup on Garvin Road.
Well, it's interesting that we got that message. We-- I actually sent that, I don't know if you noticed, I sent that, I think, on a Friday night, because the email goes to my phone once I'm out of here. I thought it was late notice. I don't know why they canceled.
It seems late.
Yeah, I don't know why it was canceled, but--
But it was-- I got that email Friday night, and I was like, I saw it, I'm like, oh, great.
I feel like there was something else, maybe too much stuff was going on and nobody was going to show up.
Hmm.
I don't know.
Warren and Finance is trying very hard to make sure that our representative is stationed at all the committees in the town, and I think we should put this on the agenda for next Monday's Warren and Finance Committee as well, see if we have a volunteer.
So you're looking-- I mean, Warren and Finance is going to all of the meeting-- all of the committees, or just the ones that involve money?
Most of them are just money, but this is-- this is one that I think probably--
I mean, are they attending the planning board meetings?
Planning board, I don't know about.
I guess I'd be interested in a list of whatever's decided, just the board knows.
Yeah, because we have a-- we have a list that the chairperson has.
Is Tom the chairperson for the planning?
I honestly have to check my notes.
Yeah, that would be good. We have-- maybe we can compare lists, because we have a couple of new, you know, where we've combined the Conservation and Forestry, and now the new cemetery. We've got the REC who is getting more involved now, so that's definitely on money.
The second question I had is, do we have any idea approximately how many cemeteries are within the town limits, and approximately how many veteran graves are we talking about, as far as totals?
I thought it was 20-something cemeteries, or higher than that?
Yeah, I was going to say, I have the information in my office and probably can do a count, but wouldn't be comfortable.
Seen the numbers, I recall them off the top of my head.
Approximately how many graves are we talking about?
I would need to estimate. I'd have to-- I'd have to look into it.
Is it three digits, two digits?
It was three pages worth of-- three, three and a half pages worth of--
Of names?
Names. Yeah, so I'd say we're in the 50s.
Oh, three digits.
Yeah, probably, yeah. But they range from--
We could look at the-- how many flags are bought, too?
Yeah, they range from Civil Revolutionary War--
(inaudible).
Right on up, so, yep. Okay. Okay, I guess we're down to old business. Fire station roof bids.
I know I've done this the last two weeks, but I'm going to, I guess, look for one more week, because I-- we did start calling references. We've left two messages. We've left three messages. We spoke to one person over the last few days. I just want to make sure that the board, you know, gets as much information as possible. Some of my last-minute questions for the low bidder in regards to when exactly they can do it, and how long it's going to be and so forth, I haven't been able to get answered. I left a voicemail again, two days now, with this individual, so I guess I'd ask one more week, and if I can't get my answers by then, then I'll present the information that I have.
The low bidder was $23,000 and--
The low bidder was, yeah, $23,000-- $23,975, and the high bidder--
Was 31.
Was 31.
So it's quite a-- quite a difference in the two. We know the high bidder, Hall Brothers--
We know them very well.
Has done work here, and we haven't had any issues. The low bidder--
That's what I'm just trying to get more information on.
Yeah.
I mean, it's nothing against the company.
No.
I mean, it just-- because no one-- I can't find people that can speak on them, short of the references that he's given me. I'm kind of reaching out to some contractors to see if they use them, why they may or may not use them.
What was the name of the company?
Karen Roofing and Construction.
You said they're out of--
Bedford. So if anybody knows anything--
Yeah, exactly.
Anybody knows anything about that company and wants to call me directly, Karen Roofing and Construction out of Bedford. We're still just doing some last-minute checks.
Yeah, there's a known and an unknown, but there's a huge, you know, quite a price difference--
Right.
In the two, so we want, of course, to save as much money as we can, but--
We want to make sure that it's--
We want a quality job done, too, as well, and that's a massive roof over there. It's not-- it's the biggest roof that, other than the salt shed, it's the biggest roof that the town owns, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll have something for you by next week.
Okay.
There's a million people that do roofing. That's strange that you only got two responses.
Well, it's a-- it's a big--
It's large, right.
Yeah, it's a large job. We know-- we know Hall Brothers does a lot of commercial roofing and-- as well as residential. I think those are what, one commercial reference?
The way that they have them, he listed them out to me in an email, they appear to be two personal names and one--
One commercial.
One commercial, but, you know, the one that I did get, I mean, was it-- I mean, it was an outstanding--
Yeah.
They were-- the notes were outstanding on the company, but--
Okay. Library walkway.
We are under construction. We have a building permit posted. It's a happy day. We'll move forward with that. A few things to update. Fairpoint will be here on Monday, September 26th, to remove all of those wires and move them over to the side, so that's good news. That was a troubling project. We gave the bid to the Brickyard--
Brick Block and Rock.
Brick Block and Rock. Don't say that too many times. I know that Ken's got to do some prep work, but Tom's already started dumping some material on the other side, and it should be up and running.
Yep. When is Fairpoint coming in?
Monday, September 26th, the same day that Dr. Energy--
He won't be in the way, though, will he?
Nah.
Okay.
Shouldn't be.
If they are, we're going to deal with it then.
Are they doing the--
They're both coming, so I'm not getting--
They're doing the spray foam that day?
Yes, underneath, and they're only moving the wires to that side trim, so--
Yeah, and then spray foam's access from the back corner, so shouldn't make--
I'm just not going to tell either one of them until that day.
That's quite all right. The contractors, they ought to be used to working.
That's right.
Good. Okay, old sand salt building.
So just a confirmation that I did speak to both board commissioners, and we will be having a workshop at 4:00 on Tuesday, September 27th--
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, to discuss the little projects that needed to be done, and then maybe, hopefully, viewing the bid that we can put together for the removal of the demo of the building. So 4:00 next Tuesday.
Is that open to the public?
It's a workshop, so you certainly can sit through it. The board generally doesn't allow input, but--
Okay, fire truck-- fire tanker purchase?
So per your request, we reached out to Warren and Finance Chair, who reached out to her committee, and did confirm that they're having a meeting on Monday, September 26th. She's sent a couple of emails asking for information to be sent over. Michelle sent a package of everything that she had, and I will touch base with the fire-- the fire chief returns to work tomorrow, so I'll touch base with him and have him send over whatever he has.
I did speak to him last Tuesday night after he met. When he left here, he went to Rochester, and, you know, it is a positive thing there, so the dollar amounts that he was talking are, you know, would work.
Yep.
So, but once again, we're, you know, it's a non-binding thing as far as Rochester's concerned, so--
Yeah, and I was-- I tried to be clear in the Warren and Finance in the email that I sent out to them, that, you know, you wanted their input, but it was, you know, just for informational purposes. There's no vote or anything that has to happen.
Yep. Okay. Damn update. Go.
Well--
Good news, kind of.
Give us a damn update.
Good news, well, it's certainly good news.
Well--
The good news is it's staying warm and no rain.
And you're going to continue to get interest on your money, because you don't need to spend it.
That's right. Now, where did that-- how far around the town did that circular-- that letter circulate?
I forwarded it to the board via email. So it basically said that the water levels were too low at this point to do any work.
Right, to do any work at this time.
So they've tabled it, so the $3,000 that you guys motioned to move out of that emergency account isn't-- Bill didn't need to vote or speak on behalf of the board, because they basically said they didn't need it at this time, and they were going to reevaluate it at a later date?
There was not a date for the next meeting on those--
No, but they were going to look at the whole thing down the road and just kind of see what happened?
Right. But they-- they have to wait now, because the divers' information--
Right.
Is not available, because the divers can't dive, because there's not enough water. So it's a little confusing, but it's gradually going forward, but nobody spent any money yet.
It sounded like they basically didn't want to go in and fix the few leaks that were there when there's not a full tank of water to show where all of the leaks were.
Right, right. Why go in, right? If you're going to go in and fix it, you might as well do it once, right?
Wait till all of them can show.
I know somebody that's had to-- went to take their boat out in Mawson today, and they couldn't get it out.
Because the water was too low?
It was too low.
Yeah. I know Elise and I had a conversation today. We-- we've gotten a couple of calls over the last few days about wells going dry, and what, if anything, that the town was doing to assist. We talked about-- and who's the school liaison?
Me.
Maybe a conversation-- I mean, we've always opened up the school in the past, you know, if it's a disaster, that's always been our place as far as, you know, water and showers and-- So I've given out that number, you know, that they can reach out to the administration if they don't have water. Some of them were concerned about showers. You know, they asked if they could use the water on the sides, the side of the building over there, so, you know, any resources, and if you guys, you know, if anybody is having a problem or needs some more, I mean, we talked about maybe reaching out to the YMCA. Sometimes they give out temporary passes, you know, for-- in situations like this, or the town, I mean, that would be even something that our neighbors, helping neighbors, could help with, you know, a YMCA pass if, you know. And it's really dry out there, very tough for us, once the well goes dry.
Terribly dry, yeah. For those that have traveled down by the Hopper Road, Milton Mills End, the dam down there, the other day, it was down to two areas, maybe three feet across, going over the dam. Today, it's a little bit better with the rain we got yesterday, but it's-- I won't even say it's better, it's not. It's just it's-- it's maybe three-quarters of the dam now is flowing water, but it's still, you know, it's still not-- it's only a quarter inch deep, so, you know, it's--
I got a call-- I got another call today, sorry, about someone that was a commercial water truck, I mean, unnamed, pumping water out of Horn Pond with out-of-state plates. So we did pass that information on to our Sheriff's Department, but he'd been down there once or twice--
Oh, no.
--filling up their water trucks.
Yeah, no, it's extremely dry. Other than the other day, the town of York is actually getting water from Kennybunk. There's an interconnect that goes between Kittery, and it goes, if I'm not mistaken, all the way up to Portland. You know, once Kennybunk is connected with Bedford and it keeps on going, they're buying water from Kennybunk, flowing it down through to York for the residents, because Chase's Pond is so down--
Wow.
--and so low. And that pond usually yields, I think it's 30 million gallons, a--
I've heard it's one of the highest--
Yeah, it's a huge yield. The town of York in a busy-- or actually, an average day in the town of York is a million gallons a day.
Wow.
Is what the town uses, so--
Conserve, conserve, conserve.
Yeah, I mean--
Or at least, I mean, that's--
Yeah.
Take short showers.
Yep, I mean--
Don't water your lawns or gardens.
Yeah.
Put them to bed for the winter early.
Yeah, I don't think anything's growing now, so--
No.
Pick them up and pack them in.
Good idea.
Just be really, really careful, because even-- I've heard even good wells, recent, you know, new wells are going dry, so, you know, unfortunately, from our standpoint, all we can do is just, you know, tell folks to use common sense and good judgment.
Right, but reach out if there's really a situation--
Yeah, oh, yeah, if you have an issue, by all means, call the town hall, and we'll see what we can do, but--
Where was the commercial tanker?
Horn Pond.
Yeah, after that, Horn Pond.
I'm assuming that's not legal.
I would assume not.
Don't know.
Deputy did not find the info.
Yeah.
He took it right down, so--
No, which-- which entry did they use?
I can give you some more information off camera, if you'd like, but I got-- I'm just trying to pass along the basics. The Sheriff's Department, you know, keep it kind of to ourselves as far as the details of it, but--
Okay. New business Bureau of Packs and Lands letter?
Hmm?
Hmm? Assuming that's something you have, Jennifer?
I do, actually. Oh, wait, here it is.
Oh, good.
So Ms. Larissa Crockett had sent me that. I did a little bit of-- going to add your letterhead and put your pretty name at the bottom.
Something we're sending up to them.
This is, yeah, if you want to read it out loud, it only needs one signature, but we want the board to discuss it.
Okay, dated September 20th, 2016, State Liaison Officer, Bureau of Packs and Lands, 22 State House Station, Augusta, Maine. Dear Sir and Madam, the Town of Acton is pleased to forward this application under the Land and Water Conservation Fund Program administered through the Maine Department of Conservation. The Town of Acton is applying for a LWCV, which is the Land of Water Conservation Fund, grant in the amount of $100,000 in federal funds for the acquisition and development of parking and trails on the 25-acre parcel to be open to the public for recreational activities. This is the piece that we voted to buy on the H Road up at the Apple Orchard. I'm aware that-- I am aware that should this application receive approval, there are federal and state requirements and project conduct for the operation of the maintenance and complete facilities with which the Town of Acton will be obligated to comply. The required local legislative approval was obtained from town meeting on Tuesday, June 14th, 2016. Larissa Crockett will be the principal contact and project manager for this project. She can be reached at telephone number 207-- yeah, so on and so forth. So, the only-- let's see, sincerely Chairman of the Board. So I guess we just need to have approval from the board here to sign this and send it on its way, so--
I think it's just the cover letter for the application for the grant, so if it comes down that they're one of the chosen ones, you may get more details about the -- all of those requirements that are in there, but--
Yeah, that's the only--
Obligations does the town have for the-- do you get that, um, you know?
There-- I don't think there were any obligations for us. It's actually going to save us money in the long run if they do get this. We won't have to take out a loan for as much as they had asked us to. Is that correct?
I actually heard that, yeah.
Yes, and to be honest with you, I haven't read the grant application, so I can't-- I'm really not one to answer that. I mean, I think that she came before the board and spoke to the board about applying, because the application had to be in the town's name. The board hasn't committed to anything as far as, you know, there was some talk about there had to be certain walkways through there, there had to be, you know, certain things had to happen with the-- with the piece of property to qualify for it, and the board's been very clear that, you know, it is what it is and stands as it stands, apply for the grant like that, and then, you know, we'll discuss it as it comes along, so they're not aware of any, you know, specific things that, you know, things that are going to be tied to it. I mean, do you know any more of that, Paul? And that's the understanding that I had. I know that there were different grants for different things, but the ones that I believe they're applying for took the property as it was.
I'm not specifically aware of what, if anything, is tied to the grant application. I-- it does occur to me, however, that the ordinance that we have about accepting grants does have this lovely phrase about not obligating the town in any way, so we will probably want to be fairly careful about reviewing what those obligations are, if any, you know, to see if they're in conflict before, you know. In other words, we may legally, according to the ordinance, not really be able to move forward with it, depending on what that is.
Well, we went to the treasurer, and the treasurer spoke to the attorney, and just to get-- remember, to get approval to apply for the grant, based on how the warrant article was written. We know that-- what was the last letter that we sent, that it couldn't-- what was the word? It couldn't--
Encumber.
Couldn't encumber the town in any way, right? We did get some advice on it, but again, they still think this is the-- from what I understand, and, you know, Larissa will certainly, she's more than happy to come and speak to you guys, but this is just a cover letter to go with the grant. I mean, if it comes back, I have to think if they give that kind of money, the stipulations are going to be spelled out, and you guys would have to sign off, and then that would be your chance, so--
Well, I mean, as long as, I mean, clearly, the ordinance is part of this mix--
Right.
So, and we have a refusal point, so I don't want to stir mud, but hopefully--
Right.
It'll go forward without being legally constrained.
Right. I would think if the grant was approved by the state and put forward--
Right.
And we find that there is something in there that makes it so it does encumber the town--
And right, and I--
You could refuse the grant.
Right, and using the walking trails, because somehow I remember that being part of the conversation, let's just say they wanted-- they had to have handicap-accessible walking trails. I mean, I have to think that before someone's going to give the town that kind of money, they're going to come out and look and see whether they're there or not, do you know what I mean? So if that kind of stipulation is put on there--
Yeah.
So I have to think that there'll be checks and balances for both sides.
Right, right. I think part of this also was Three Rivers couldn't apply for this.
Yeah, well, it's a town-owned property, that's why.
Right, right.
That's why the town had to--
So that's why it had to go in the town's name, so, okay.
You know, we can sign it, we can ask her to come before you with more information, we can maybe just have a-- even have a conference call. I mean, I think it's a pretty broad, I mean, it's a pretty, you know, basic cover letter.
Yeah. Okay, what's the wishes of the board?
I make a motion to sign the cover letter for the application to the Land and Water Conservation Fund--
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? Probably wouldn't be a bad idea-- Probably wouldn't be a bad idea to have a conference call with her and...
Okay, before we do...
Before that goes any further?
Sure.
So, abatement.
We have one abatement for property at sixty-three Patriot Lane, essentially, or what happened was they, their homestead and veteran was not moved to the new property they, they bought in time. So, it just needs to be, we took it off one property and moved it to the other. So, this is an abatement, giving them that on their home. Homestead and veteran, right?
Yep. Okay, we typically don't read the names of these folk.
You can, it's all public information, it's up to you. We're just the, whatever you want to do.
Okay, tax abatement. This is going to John in Virginia Bradshaw. Town of Acton has reviewed the two thousand sixteen assessed value of your Acton property. As a result of our review, we have granted an abatement on Acton map lot two thirty-four dash zero six zero. Reason for the abatement, the homestead and veteran's exemption was missed in the original commitment. The revised valuations, tax valuation and tax, and the original valuations and tax are displayed in the table below. Let's see, basically what it ends up being, let's see, it says that we, we, the Acton Board of Assessors, have approved a tax abatement of two, twenty-three hundred, twenty-three thousand one hundred dollars in value and two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents in tax dollars on real estate. Please contact our assessor, Agent John E. O'Donnell and Associates, if you have any further questions regarding this matter. So, basically, it's two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents worth of abatement, so...
Value of a homestead and a veteran.
Yes. What's the feelings of the board?
I make a motion to sign the tax abatement for map lot two three four dash zero six zero.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? There you go. Thanks. You should be so kind.
Sure.
Very good. Next, we have Board of Selectmen's Meeting Times. The, I don't know how much information you want to give out on this, so...
Very little. So, the Sheriff's Department is putting together a program in which they have handpicked some town officials that they would like to meet with. At this point, they're not ready to disclose the details of those meetings, but it is going to interfere. Mr. Walsh was chosen as one of them, as the Chair of the Selectmen. I can tell you that my Chair in Shapley was also selected there, they're handpicking the individuals. As time goes on, they'll, they'll release more information, and they will actually involve the public, but at this point, they've asked that we not share much information at all.
This is all a good thing, not a...
This is all a good thing. It's all a very good, positive thing, yes.
A very good, positive thing, so...
Anyways, at this point, the, the meetings are going to be on Tuesdays from ten, from October fourth through December sixth. The problem is going to be a time constraint for Mr. Walsh.
Stats, the stats at six o'clock in Alfred. So, to go from here to there in, right now, it would be twenty minutes, is pushing it, by my standards.
Jennifer Thush, he could get there in fifteen, yes, that's true.
Lights and sirens.
So, we wanted to talk to the board about moving up the meeting. I guess that you have a couple of options. I mean, you can change it to a different day if you feel like five o'clock is, you know, that you don't want to come any earlier. Do, does anybody, does anybody get calls or complaints that people can't get here? I mean, you can move it, or you can move it up to four thirty, fifteen-ish?
Four o'clock would be good.
Four fifteen would be better for your administrator, but...
That's four fifteen to keep Jen sane.
This whole conversation came about at about three thirty this afternoon, so...
I tried saying, I tried saying four thirty.
You were trying for quarter of five.
I did.
It's coming from the same person that can get there in fifteen minutes.
True, this is true.
So...
I would respectfully request at least four fifteen. I need at least fifteen minutes between closing that office and, or you can change the night of the week if you want to, um...
Well, how long does it take? Is it forty?
It's good thirty minutes, anyway. It's where you and I got, went over for the ceremony they had. It's, it's pushing thirty minutes.
Well, someday I'd like to see your route, but... All right, down Route four, right? You guys know where he's going?
Yep, so...
So, do you want to move, I mean, do you want to move it to Wednesdays temporarily? It's keeping it at five, or do you want to move it up, still on Tuesdays, whatever you guys want to do?
I like the idea of keeping it the same day, only because then we're not out another...
Night of the week, a different night of the week?
Night of the week, so, I suppose I could make four fifteen work, if that would work with the other two members of the board.
Sure.
Four fifteen? Is that okay with you? Okay.
Now, is the idea that we'll just do this, can we just say that we're going to do this through the end of the year?
Sure.
Because of the holidays, the winter?
Yeah, December sixth, we're only talking another few, yep.
And we're, hopefully, at the next meeting, I'll present to you holiday schedules so we can kind of talk about closures and meetings, and through November and December, we may cut back.
Christmas and holidays this year, so...
All right, so we'll plan on four fifteen.
Yep.
And not next week, because you guys have a four o'clock.
Right. So, that would start the following, two weeks out?
So, twenty-sixth, you have a four o'clock, no, wait a minute, twenty-seventh, you have a four o'clock. In the wrong month. And then, so it'll start the first Tuesday in October. Starting the first Tuesday of October and going through the end of the calendar year...
Right.
We'll start the Selectmen's Meetings at four fifteen.
Yeah, that'd be the fourth, so...
So, we'll put out a memo to all the department heads and try to get temporary word out there.
Yep.
So, next week, we're all set for five, and...
Yep. Just for the record, Christmas is on a Sunday.
So, that means we close the whole week before? Doesn't work.
Well, we're going back to four o'clock on this, keep...
You could, you could start at four, I just can't promise that I'll be in here, so...
No, it's okay.
Christmas is on a Sunday.
Yes, so, okay.
I better run my thoughts by off camera first, so you don't make any faces at me.
Sure. Okay, so that's, that's okay with the board, then? October, October fourth, we'll sat at four fifteen?
Yes, yes.
Give me your bill, okay. Great, thanks. Okay, we added an item D for public assistance after we had our public hearing? So, basically, just to sign what the state is requiring. General Assistance Ordinance Appendix A dash D, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. The municipality of Acton adopts the MMA Model Ordinance General Assistance Appendix A through D for the period of October one, two thousand sixteen, through September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. These appendixes are filed with the Department of Health and Human Services, DHHS, in compliance with Title twenty-two MRSA four three zero five parentheses four. Signed the twentieth day of September, two thousand sixteen, by the municipal officers. What is the wishes?
I move that we sign the General Assistance Ordinance supplied by MMA, sorry.
Moved and seconded? Okay, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? Okay.
I did it backwards.
Drop down another line if you want.
Doesn't, doesn't it always, it's always the other way?
Usually it is. Is that going to make a great difference?
No.
Okay. It's printed where signed and signed where printed. Typically, you do, you sign first and print after. Only the state of Maine. Or the government, I should say.
Yeah, we are...
Yeah, let's make that broad.
Thank you.
Okay, any public comment? Anybody from the public wish to speak to us tonight? Anyone at all? Nope? Okay, I'd like to welcome Mr. Williams back from the great beyond, up in Canada. He's back for the winter. Okay, announcements. Volunteers are needed for the rectiparmen, the cemetery, and the road committee. Flu shots are available here on September twenty-sixth at twelve, twelve o'clock. Yep, September twenty-sixth. Town report letters are due on, on the thirtieth. That's town report letters are due from, on the thirtieth from all department heads. And the two thousand sixteen, seventeen winter salt, sand bids are out, so, Dr. Williams.
Mr. Chair, who is your agency that's going to be providing the influenza vaccinations?
Visiting nurse.
Visiting nurse. Are they going to have the potent vaccine as well as the regular vaccine?
I can give you the number, you can call them directly. We're, we're just serving as a location.
The reason I say that is the CDC has decided that people over sixty-five do not develop a good antibody response with the regular vaccine that's given out to the public, and therefore, a new potent vaccine is available through the system starting last year, and it provides about four times the amount of antigen in the injection, same, same amount of actual volume, but it does improve the antibody production by elderly people who have a difficult time producing antibodies. So, it's now recommended for all people sixty-five and over. And to be honest with you, if I were sixty-five and over and they offered me a regular flu injection, I would refuse it because it's not going to help me.
I can email you their number if you want to call them directly and ask them that.
Thank you, ma'am.
I guess, is there anything else to come before the board from the members? Nothing? Nothing, Bill?
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Aye, second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor? All opposed? Great, thank you. Thanks, all, have a great evening.